Good morning. It is Tuesday, June 1st, 2021, and I'd like to call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting. Would you please stand if you're able and join us in stating the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are still continuing to do some social distancing while we do have our meeting room open and we're continuing to provide access to our meetings via Zoom, which is allowed under Code Section 21.8.1. With that, is there a motion to adopt today's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Hedin's?
Aye.
Now we'll move on to public comment number one. This is the comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. Do we have public on our meeting today? I guess I do see six participants. Okay. Okay, all right. Doesn't sound like there's anyone on to make a public comment, so we will close the public comment section. Next up, we're going to recognize Margaret James for her 27 years of service with Story County. I'm sure it seems like just yesterday that you started here, Margaret. And we do have a plaque to recognize you that says an appreciation of 27 years of leadership dedication and service to the citizens of Story County from 1993 to 2021. Yeah, and I know that I just want to say, you know, my short tenure here, I've enjoyed working with you, your knowledge base and the information that you bring forth to the Board of Health and to the Board of Supervisors. Just thank you much for all you have done with the county.
And I would like to add to that. Margaret and I share a real concern about water quality and quality and soil health, and I really have appreciated all that she has done to help with the watershed management authorities, to help with our working group, the watershed assessment, the septic ordinance, which we have here, which I'm very proud of, and I'm very glad I was able to be a part of that. And I really appreciate you, all the hard work you did on that. And I said to you, thanks for all your work to help keep Story County clean and green.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And for never beating around the bush.
Yeah.
Your, your upfront and straight-to-it way of handling things is refreshing and has been wonderful. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much. That really means so much, dear friend.
Well, we have a plaque for you.
She didn't even show it.
Are you guys gonna push yourself?
I'm gonna go down here.
Yes.
So chin.
So the chin.
Oh, Margaret.
You can hold this.
Yes.
I'm gonna meet the...
Oh, the thing.
Yeah. So let's move this one.
This looks good.
From center?
It may come this way. Good.
Call that a finger scare. Got it?
Yep.
All right. Moving on, we have no agency reports and there's no minutes this week to consider. So next we move on to consideration of personnel actions.
Okay, I move approval of personnel actions as listed.
Correct. Then moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Hedin's?
Aye.
Next, we'll move on to consent agenda, and I would like to pull items number four and five. Both of them relate to HERDA, their HERDA request. So would we like to do a motion approving all but four and five and then do those two afterwards?
Sure.
I move approval of consent agenda pulling items four and five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Hedin's?
Aye.
I, oh, I did want to make one comment on number 10 on the consent agenda. If anyone was looking at that, the link is wrong on that, but the address was correct. So I just wanted, if anyone was kind of looking or listening back at this, they would know that the link was wrong because the other information was correct. Okay, so back to item four. Consideration of HERDA's request to move additional funds, which is $29,000 from county transportation to the city of Ames rides. I see that both Julia and Brooke are on.
Yes, we did move over on the motion.
I think we did. Yeah, we did.
Sorry.
Yeah, okay. So Julia, I'm wondering if you could just explain this to us again?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. What am I, I'm, which one am I on that I'm explaining?
Number four, it's the moving the additional funds, the $29,000 from county transportation to the city of Ames rides. And just explaining the need as to why, why we're doing that.
Okay, so the $29,000, so as we've explained, this, we cannot use our federal funding to fund trips that are within the city of Ames for Ames to Ames trips. So that takes a large portion of what our federal funding is away from us being able to do trips within the city of Ames. However, there are still people that we cannot move over to Dial-A-Ride, but, and they don't fall under other funding, that still do need some door-to-door services for various reasons. And I know we pulled a report that Brooke can probably talk a little bit more about on what some of the reasons for those trips are. And so what we were asking was, since the city of Ames is still within Story County, if we could use $29,000 of that, of county dollars to, toward providing trips within the city of Ames, then we would also be able to use our, some state funding that we receive and match that $29,000 to also provide services within the city of Ames. And then the rest of that money can then go toward the county for all of the, the county trips that we do. And that's something we really want to push further in doing more of those county trips now that we're toward the end of the pandemic.
How much city money goes for rides from Ames, within Ames?
$42,000.
$42,000 of city and this $27,000 then of the county money would be the only county money going for Ames to Ames rides, correct? For $29,000, right?
Yes.
And is that just for this year? Or are you saying that would be a, is that next year as well? Is this a one-year thing? Is what I'm asking?
They did ask for funding for next year.
They did. For the $29,000?
It was $27,000. It's on there also. I think it might be number five.
Fine.
Okay, I'm sorry. Did I talk about the wrong one then? Because I was thinking we were talking about fiscal year '22, but you're talking about finishing out fiscal year '21?
I'm looking at fiscal '21 letter.
Okay, and I'm sorry. What I just told you was I was on the wrong line, line item then because I was talking about fiscal year '22. So Brooke, do you want to talk about fiscal year '21?
Hi, sorry. I was muted, so. So for fiscal year '21, as the supervisors may remember, we had allocated some of the county funding to help get us through until March, and that funding actually went a little further than we anticipated to cover part of April as well for the city of Ames. We've met with Sandra a couple of times and discussed moving some of the funding. So we're not asking any budget amendments for the county. We just wanted to move $29,000 over to be able to get used for the city. In the meantime, we've sent notices out to writers and let them know that starting July 1st, there would be changes to transportation for the city of Ames, looking at having a few things done, including restricting their trip purposes and how many trips they could take, making sure that they've exhausted all other potential funding sources, such as the paratransit program through CyRide. You know, let's say, for example, they may qualify for CICS funding, getting them on, basically getting them on the most appropriate funding source that we can. And then we would also work in tandem with CyRide on a travel training program as well. So those folks who could be using fixed route, you know, are able to do so and are, are doing that instead of using HERDA. However, we do have folks who, for example, live and work in Ames, but there's not a stop near their work. Or we have one writer, for example, who takes her child to ACPC and then has to go to Walmart for work, which is four trips a day, would take four transfers each way, making that an extremely difficult transportation to keep her working. So we understand that there's some unique circumstances out there for people and we want to be able to serve them. It's just making sure that we're doing it within the guidelines and the constraints that we have with our funding. And so these, this $29,000 being shifted over for the city of Ames is not going to have a negative or adverse impact on those who live in, outside of Ames but within Story County. We have other funding that, that we are able to use for them.
So the $29,000 in FY '21 is county dollars that will be shifted to Ames to Ames rides, correct?
Correct, just to get us through the end of fiscal '21.
Is there other county money that was already shifted earlier this year for Ames to Ames rides?
Yeah. Yep, we, we did that prior to the 1st of January. The Board of Supervisors approved that change, but at the time only wanted to approve enough to get us through March because, as you know, you have a new supervisor. And so the board at that time made the decision to, to just do part of it so that the new Board of Supervisors would have the ability to make that decision as a group.
Remind me what that amount was that we shifted?
I believe it was $65,000.
So what did that leave as county dollars that was going for rides outside of the city limits of Ames?
I apologize. I don't know that full allocation off the top of my head.
Andrew's moving up here.
$45,868 because the...
$45,868.
Initial allocation was $110,868. And then where the extra $29,000 comes from? Well, the $29,000, the, the $45,000 was reused and was taken from there. It was all taken from, what was allocated for the county. Moved over to be used for the city.
So the $29,000 is taken out of the $45,000? Or was it prior to the $45,000 and we have $45,000 left?
Taken out of the $45,000.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So when the $65,000 was taken, it left $45 plus, and then the $29,000 was taken out of that.
So that's why I'm leaving about $16,000 for county?
$16,868.
Okay, so...
Just for the, for the month of June? I mean, that will take us through the end of the fiscal year.
So $94,000 is what the total in FY '21 that has been moved from county to Ames to Ames rides. But next year, it's only going to be $27,000. And what you detailed in your memo will take care of the remainder, the difference, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And Julia, excuse me, either Julia or Brooke, one of you made the comment that you are looking at making changes to, what is it, the criteria or whatever type of rides you are restricting? Restricting rides? Is that what I heard you say within Ames?
Within the city of Ames. And that would be that they would be for, primarily for medical or grocery trips. But we do have a few, like Brooke had explained, where they, oh, and the other thing is that we would be restricting them to the number of rides that they could take per month. But then we do have a few special circumstances where it is most convenient for them to ride HERDA due to childcare and job. And we don't want to make that more difficult for people. And we certainly don't want anybody losing their job because of transportation. So there will be some exceptions to that rule, but for the majority of the, of the people, it will be medical and grocery and limited to the number of trips they can take per month.
Julia, I think you were having conversations with the city of Ames. Does that, your restrictions jeopardize at all any of your asset funding from the city? Because I think they had a broader criteria or expectations for the utilization of those funds. And my concern, I just want to make sure that these funds aren't going to then, I guess, supplant if the city decides to withdraw those funding at all. I mean, I'm not saying they are, but I'm just wanting, seeking some clarification on that.
Right. We had met with, at, with Jean Crassie and Deb Shildroff before we had made these recommendations for limiting the trip purposes and had talked through that with them. And then we are having, and they, there was no determination at that point in time, but they knew that we were looking at doing something because we had to. And now we're meeting with them again on the 7th. But what we wanted to do before we met on the 7th was to know, you know, if, if the county is going to, you know, reallocate or, I'm sorry, not reallocate, but this is starting for next year, fiscal year '22, if the county was going to authorize the $27,000 that we were requesting to go to the city of Ames, because if that doesn't happen, then we're going to have to go back to the drawing board and look at something different. But yes, we are definitely meeting with the city and Asset and Sandra and I believe CICS, so that we're all on the same page of how we're going to move forward.
Sandra, you're going to be involved in the meeting on the 7th? Okay, good. You should have been in the last one. I wasn't invited. You weren't invited. Okay.
We wanted to invite you, Sandra.
Okay. So that's '22. What's the amount, with what you're proposing with the $27,000 county, what would be left for the county in '22 for outside of Ames?
And that's, that's the other agenda item. Yeah, yeah. But can I, can I, how are you, how are you going to separate the, the rides that are required to follow ADA requirements for no restrictions on ride types or frequency from, from these rides that we're talking about?
So there's an application process for those that are under the Dial-A-Ride program. And once they fill out that application and are approved, we have that in our software so that we know what funding everybody rides on. So it, our software is pretty, I can't even say. It's a, a pretty intense software, and so we can do a lot of things and we can narrow it down to exactly how many trips people are taking for the, you know, that are, what do I say, how many trips they're limited to, what funding sources they're allowed to ride under, and those types of things. So that, we've been doing that for a long time, so that's not going to really change how we normally process things.
Thanks. Okay, thank you. Any additional questions on number four? To move the additional $29,000 from county transportation to city of Ames, which will finish out fiscal year '21, correct?
Yeah.
Questions? Is there a motion?
I would move approval of the transfer of $29,000.
Oh, I'll second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Yeah, I guess I, yeah, I guess I have one more question. I'm sorry. This is Latifah. So the, the funding that we're talking about is not for Dial-A-Ride riders then? Or it is for Dial-A-Ride?
It is not for Dial-A-Ride.
And I haven't gotten a list to see who's been moved over or anything like that, so.
I think we've moved, is it like 34 people over, Brooke?
Yes. There were 17 just in the month of May. So it was slow getting started, but we're making some good traction at this point.
And there's, there's no concern that the Dial-A-Ride funding is going to be insufficient?
Well, that's CyRide's funding, but we've never exhausted all of the funding they have allocated for the Dial-A-Ride program. So we're not concerned about that at this time.
Can I have any other questions? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Merkin? Basil?
Aye.
Hedin's?
Aye.
All right, next we're on to five, which was the consideration of their fiscal year '22 provider program, their participation agreement with HERDA. And so it looks like it's their contract. And wanted to make sure, anyone had any questions in regards to what they have listed there with their funding?
No, I'm just trying to look at it to...
So what, what that was going to look like would be like the $27,000 that we're asking from the county, $42,000 from the city that we have signed a contract for. There would be an additional $27,000 in HERDA state funding that we receive that would be allocated just to the city of Ames. And then, so that, Sandra, you're better at math than I am, but whatever that equals, then that would be the amount of money that we would be able to use for non-Dial-A-Ride trips for fiscal year '22. Leaving a bigger portion to be for the county trips, which is what we want the, the county money to go for. And we have some plans to, now that we're toward the end of the pandemic and getting more people riding, to focus on more of the county areas.
And then, Julia, I do have one question on the Vanpool pilot project that you're carrying over. Are you hoping to get that up and going?
Yeah, the pandemic kind of put a damper on that too. Brooke, do you want to talk a little bit more about that with the Vanpool?
Sure. Um, so obviously, the pandemic kind of threw everybody through the loop this, this last year, but things are doing better. In the meantime, we also had our, the team we work with at Enterprise that manages the Vanpool program, they have taken other positions within the company. So we also had two new contacts over there. We've met with them. They've been trying to meet with 3M, Burke, Danfoss, and Hawk, where the four in Story County that they wanted to, to initially focus on. But when I met with them last week, they said they really haven't been able to make much progress. I don't know if it's because the, the contacts they had over there are just busy. So I was going to reach out to Brenda Dryer and see if we can try and jointly contact them and kind of get their foot in the door for those conversations.
So this, it sounds like this one is still a kind of a standstill, that you're going to be having conversations with them, but not sure when it would be actually up and running to provide that particular service. Is that correct?
Correct.
So the total the county is investing in HERDA next year is $84,000? Or $84,000 plus the other numbers here?
So it's $111,000 that they were allocated for FY '22. And so the $84,000 will be for county transportation and the $27,000 for city of Ames. And then they're carrying over, requesting to carry over the funding that they had initially carried over from FY '20, yeah, for the Vanpool.
Okay, so it's the $12,630 plus the $3,000. There's a carryover amounts.
Okay.
That was a missed bullet.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Now, is there a motion to approve that this be your '22 Provider Program Participation Agreement with HERDA effective July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Being on, Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Hedin's? Aye. Thank you. And thank you, Brooke and Julia, for being on.
Thank you. We really appreciate the support.
Good to hear you got so many over to Dial-A-Ride in the last month.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to continue to work on that too. And just, we want to get people riding under the correct funding that, that they need to be riding under so that those that don't have any funding can ride under the general public and it still be sustainable for them. So that's what we're working for.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next we'll move on to public hearing, excuse me, public hearing items. We have first consideration of ordinance 294, minimum requirements for tanning facilities. Good morning, Margaret, again?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. So because this is a public hearing, I'll just go through the highlights of how we got to this point today. So from 2013 to 2019, the 28A agreement was signed and Barmell Health did the inspections, and that is for the entire county, including Ames, Nevada, Story City, where most of the tanning facilities are. Our last count was 22 facilities. With the pandemic, that has probably gone down, some dropped down. And then in 2019, this was discontinued. IDPH stated the counties that needed to establish local authority to continue the inspection process. IDPH decided that they didn't have the funding or the staff to support this. IDPH will continue to do the permitting of the facilities and the, the county will do the inspections and enforcement. Our ordinance must be as stringent as the statute. And then April 6th, 2021, the Board of Health recommended to the Board of Supervisors to consider adopting the ordinance, but denying anyone under the age of 18 to use the tanning facilities. That Board of Supervisors sent that back for reconsideration because it thought it was too stringent. Board of Health decided to stick by their stronger no one under 18 as opposed to no one under 16 with some other limitations. So here we are today to discuss this in a public hearing setting. So it's, the, the ordinance is to adopt... Uh, so here we are today, um, to discuss this in a public hearing setting. So, um, it's, uh, the, the ordinance is to adopt, uh, let's see, um, Public Health 641, IAC, Chapter 46, minimum requirements for tanning facilities. We are adopting that in its entirety by reference and then also adding the limitations on who can use, uh, the tanning devices. No one under the age of 16 shall use a tanning device. And then, um, people ages 16 and 17 can only use a tanning device with parental permission. That parental permission must be updated annually. And, um, that's, um, that pretty much explains it in a nutshell. I don't feel I need to read the whole thing. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, any questions for Margaret before I open the public hearing? Okay, so I'll now open the public hearing on first consideration of ordinance number 294, the tanning facilities. Anyone would like to speak, if you'd, uh, please raise your hand if you're on mute or if you're in the op, or in the public meeting room, you can come up towards the front here or you click either star six by star six or star nine on Zoom. I think it's star nine. Let's see if anyone would like to speak. Any of the attendees? Nothing? All right. With that, we will close the public hearing. Any further discussion with the supervisors? I just know for myself, I've kind of struggled on this particular, particular issue. I kind of look at it, if you're, the, the industry, which would be the tanning industry or whatever, stated they already don't allow under 16 to tan, if I recall correctly. So you're looking at your 16 through 17 and I'm kind of thinking parents are probably already giving kids the okay whether they can or can't do it. So now you're just going to have a form at a location. And I don't know how often you're going to be able to check the tanning salons. How many did you say there in the county, Margaret?
Uh, 22.
22.
And at, at a minimum, we have to inspect them once a year and then, um, we see that.
So, um, on there, you know, I just look at it, it's cancer. And what can we do to prevent, prevent kids from getting cancer? Whether it's, you know, basal cell or melanoma, and if melanoma's not caught early, it's deadly. It's deadly. So that's the concern that I have.
Right, it's one of the different, um, take on it as somebody who, as a teenager, used to use a tanning lamp in my own home. And, um, didn't have a whole lot, I, I burned myself badly. I burned myself badly a couple of times. And I looked at that and thought, I, I think, you know, what is the alternative? What is the other thing that might happen? And I think that the tanning facilities, yep, it'd be great if people didn't at all, but I think the facilities probably are safer than a teenage kid at home with a tanning lamp or sun lamp, thinking they can do whatever. And that's why I voted the way I did. I, I, I think, I thought it was perhaps the lesser of, of the two evils that might happen.
Yeah. And I, I would rather see, I would rather see, uh, legislation addressing tanning in gyms and apartment complexes and that type of thing. But that's outside of what, what we're talking about here, but. Yeah, so your enforcement does not go into some of the apartment complexes that have tanning facilities?
Yes, we do.
It does? It does. So it does go into that?
Yes.
And then just your other, other establishments?
Um, yeah.
Sports facilities, hospitals that they have, well, no, not hospitals, because those are medical devices. We don't do the hospitals. But apartments that are related with the university, usually they let to offer, they add identity. So the university ones, do you still have authority to go into? Is that what you're saying? Gotcha.
Yes. Just not the medical ones.
Gotcha. So, um, I, 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 I hear exactly what Supervisor Markan did just then as well. And that is a concern is do you drive people into doing it home? I also think that there's probably some that are already doing it from home. That's why I'm conflicted on this particular issue and, um, actually tried to reach, um, some of the dermatologists again this week, but it's very hard to reach them. Just in general, it's harder in the, the work hours to get any doctor or whatever because they're so busy seeing their patients and stuff. And I tried to reach them for just, you know, some additional questions that I had and just was unable to talk this particular time. But with that, any further discussion? So I guess the question would be, is there a motion to move forward with the first consideration ordinance number 294? And to, just to clarify, it would ban people under 16 from utilizing the tanning salons and it would restrict consumers 16 through the age of 17. They would need to have parental consent. And that would have to be on file, um, with the business. And set second consideration.
Do we have to wait third now or do we have to wait till we be, no?
Next time. Next time. And we set the second consideration for June 8th, you said?
I move that we approve ordinance number 294 on first consideration and set second consideration for next Tuesday, June 8th.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Markan?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Edens, no.
Thanks for looking on this.
Yeah, thanks, Margaret. So, I don't know, I may change if I reach the doctors, uh, before we have the second consideration, but for right now. All right. Next, under additional items, uh, discussion and consideration of following the most recent CDC guidelines for social distancing. Good morning, Joby.
Good morning, Board. This is an item that we worked on in our last CCMT meeting about addressing the social distancing aspect of the CDC's recommendations for fully vaccinated people. So, looking at a lot of, how it mostly affects our buildings is our meeting rooms. This one we're specifically in. Right now have an occupancy limit for this room based off of keeping a six-foot separation. So I think the recommendation was, is to allow for it if people so choose to social distance, but lifting the actual occupancy limitations of our meeting rooms. And with that, we would need to, to address some language on our board meeting agendas. We have a special note to the public at the beginning of it, to address is why we're doing it. And then, uh, statement number four, the statement explaining why a meeting in person isn't possible and impractical for code section 21.8.1. Discuss that's something the Board's looking to move forward with or continue as we have.
Questions for Joby? Do you look, you would still have it, like this room is a maximum occupancy of 75 and then have some signage, something to say if they, like, it's recommended still social distance if you want to?
Yeah, I think we're kind of looking at it because as we were going to do with the face coverings portion of it, it's still posts a sign that say we recommend, it's recommended, but like a previous sign said that it was required. And then on some of the smaller rooms, posting something that says, stating due to the room size, some areas may not have capacity to offer social distancing to those who choose to social distance.
Would you still have anything on those signs or the, the other two supervisors, what their thoughts are on this? Also having something saying, um, you know, it's recommended if you're not vaccinated to wear a mask, would that be something included? I think you were going to have something on the front doors or whatever. I'm just, just trying to think of.
Yeah, I think we were, I think we were going to post something that, that just said, see, following CDC guidelines is recommended.
Yep.
So that we didn't have to keep all that up.
Keep changing it.
So, okay.
Yep, that's, that's the plan here.
Okay, okay. And then continuing to offer?
Offer the.
Remote access to meetings?
Then they get it. Aside from COVID, I think there's a lot of benefit to having, you know, Zoom is an option and then we will probably, I will work with IT on more permanent setup for our panel here and probably remove the tables that we've set up in here and have to put it back to its traditional layout with the chairs.
So should we, um, on, um, meeting agendas, list the number of occupancy for the room that the meeting will be in for people? Or do we not need to do that?
I'm not thinking we need to do that.
Okay, wasn't done previously.
Yeah.
We can always set the chairs, put the chairs back out, but you can also space them out a little bit too, not having the tables, but space them out a bit more. Pandemic's not over, so we want people to just remember that.
I think we were being super cautious because the way the recommendations, so it's always been is social distance. With face covering, if you can't social distance, and we've kind of been doing both.
Right, right.
I think that, just kind of saying, following CDC, CDC guidance is the most important.
Right, so, uh, taking a motion then. I move that we change our meeting room, um, limitation, I don't know why I'm having a hard time putting words together, occupancy, um, limits, um, remove the limits and post signage recommending following CDC guidelines.
Second. And, no, I just say, they also have, um, there was to remove the, um, statement explaining why meeting in person is impossible or impractical. Okay. You could say as presented.
As presented. I move acceptance as presented.
Second. Is that clear for you, Shelley?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I think, okay. Basil?
Aye.
Markan?
Aye.
Edens, aye. All right. Next we'll move on to discussion and consideration of reopening the Story County Animal Shelter Building for walk-in. And get my Ziana on there.
Good morning, Board. So I believe we're ready to unlock the doors at the animal shelter for walk-ins. Um, facilities management has assisted with signage for the floor to encourage social distancing and a plexiglass barrier for our front desk area. I would also like to cut back on open hours just slightly, just to see how busy we get at first. And, um, I would also like to keep adoptions by appointment only. There has always been an adoption application that does take a day or so to process and it was rare in the past if we were able to do same-day adoptions. Uh, some benefits of keeping adoptions by appointment only will help the staff continue to socially distance by not having to bounce around between customers. And this keeps visitation rooms available for those appointments. This will also help us relay a lot of the information or special needs about the animals they are interested in by email or phone before they meet them in person and also streamline the process. Once they select the animal, they are usually able to take them home immediately. Another thing, visitors without appointments will still be able to view the animals while they remain in enclosures and read about the animals from detailed kennel cards. They can submit applications in person if they so choose instead of online and we have plenty of space in our office available for visitors to wait for staff if they are currently helping with an adoption. And most importantly, the pandemic has proven that the public is a strong contributor to disease spread in the shelter among the animals. We have had very limited to almost zero upper respiratory and ringworm outbreaks among the cats and dogs. Are there any questions?
Yeah, Anna, this is Linda and I do have a question. Your open walk-in hours will just be during the daytime. Do you offer appointments, um, for adoptions either in the evening or on weekends for people who, uh, can't get time off of work to come adopt an animal?
Yeah, we always have, um, made appointments after four if needed or on the weekends if needed to, um, help with, you know, uh, adopters' working schedules.
I appreciate that because it's amazing how many people don't get paid leave. And particularly with a lot of the jobs that have come up in service sector after the pandemic, there are just lots of folks who used to have jobs with paid leave that do not have paid leave anymore and we wouldn't want to say, no, you have to have unpaid, take unpaid leave to come adopt a pet. So, appreciate that.
No further questions? Then there is there a motion to approve the reopening of the Story County Animal Shelter Building for walk-in as presented?
So moved.
Second. Been moved in seconded. Markan?
Aye.
Aye. Edens, aye. Thank you. Next we'll go on to facilities management's quarterly report.
Hello again.
Hello. Hi. This is Joby.
We're going to just hang out over here. Yep, here's our basic activities of this last quarter. Just a few other things that I would add to it that we're getting started on right now. Out at the Justice Center, courtroom 2A, the state was doing the, they call it their technology, um, update in, in their courtrooms. They're doing this throughout the, the state. They're trying to pick a, at least one courtroom in every, in every county to, uh, add monitors and microphones for kind of more modern update on, you know, handling primarily jury trials. They chose courtroom 2A. They started that this morning. It's a state-funded project. We just, facilities management did a little, uh, guidance on it, but they started that this morning, so anticipate that'll take the, the entire week. 60-inch monitors for jurors to see evidence presentation and better reporting and trials and this kind of thing. So it's, it's kind of nice to see for modernization of operations. A lot of things they had learned through COVID, they're going to try to incorporate into their daily operations, so it's going to be.
And so they won't be pushing the big?
Big carts with TVs around, yeah.
TV around, that's good. At least not in 2A.
Yeah, not in 2A, yeah. And, um, starting to schedule some tours and in-person meetings for our spacings assessment. Starting in the next week and into the following week to tour the buildings and get some scheduled for the in-person meetings for some of the offices and departments. So that's exciting. It was delayed quite a bit, but.
Got a question?
Sure.
Is it possible for whoever is here to also meet with the supervisors individually?
That could probably be arranged. See why not?
I would like to do that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, got a couple of big projects we're just starting on at the Justice Center for the jail. Placing all the towel hooks in all the cells and shower areas there if they were, they weren't stainless steel when the building was built and they've just rusted out over the years, so we're replacing those with stainless steel. Towel hooks, no more modern type because they got to be a, they got to be a breakaway type. Sure, you're very familiar with that, Linda. So that, you know, to, you know, for safety purposes for the inmates, so. Started on that and then over the years we've noticed there's an issue with people liking to fill all the air vents with the HVAC equipment so that air doesn't flow into their cells whether they're too hot or too cold. So we worked. So we worked with a Sargent Metal Fab out of Ames to make grates. And we're making them removable so that we can do annual cleaning of those grates to pack with toothpaste and wet toilet paper and all sorts of various items. So we'd start on that. Both those projects are pretty big undertaking because everything's permanent. So cut the old grates out, make a flange that we can drill and tap so we can bolt the new ones on. And then like all the existing shower hooks are welded on with plates that are embedded in the concrete, in the block and concrete walls. So it'll take some time. Big project, but it's a good one to get started on. And then we're finishing up all the specs for the Phase Two and Three of the HVAC project out of that facility. So we're shooting to have that go out for bid in June. It's a project that's a little over a year behind, so. Because Phase Two was supposed to happen in this current fiscal year, but COVID and a lot of other factors played into that, so. Just kind of things we got starting right now. Questions? You're answering.
We're, sorry, you all done at the HSC building getting all the repairs done with theirs?
We're still waiting on, uh, the carpet still needs to be replaced. It's, um, it's on order. We're shooting for, we're tentatively scheduled for the second week of July to have that installed. But all the sheet rock has been repaired, everything's dried out. And then, um, the ceiling tile is still on backorder. It's one of the things that are, for whatever reason, hard to get right now. Lots of building materials are very hard to get or on 400% cost.
Yes, because so many people went to just-in-time inventories. And so when there's disruptions, stuff's not on the shelf anymore. Yeah, I think a lot of places are doing that.
Yeah. I don't have any questions. Just thank you for all that you do, and notice that you've got your practical staff so that
Yes.
Hopefully, yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Help things out as well.
Anything new on the geothermal?
Um, still waiting. It's 90%, all the repairs have been made. We're just waiting on, we've still got some pump repairs to, pumps are operational. They were damaged. Still waiting on that equipment to come in to get, to make those repairs. ICAP is, is handling the insurance side of it, the investigation. Met with the insurance adjuster and gave my entire file over to them. Have to give that on a flash drive because it's just too big to email, all the pictures and timeline. We tracked all our time spent on it. I had kept notes throughout the process as it unfolded, so we have all that. Get the needed outcome on it. It'll probably be a lengthy process. I anticipate it'll probably take a year or two before it gets settled with them.
Hopefully.
It's about $130,000 worth of damage total at this point.
Amazing. It's amazing how just one minute, one decision can cause so much.
One bad decision.
One bad decision, exactly. Thanks for all the documentation you did on that. That was a
Yeah, I knew it was, once it happened, it was, I knew what was gonna come with it, so tried to stay on top of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next we have the Environmental Health Quarterly Report.
Margaret James, Environmental Health Department Director. Last one ever, so here we go. So the well activity. It's, it's been keeping up pretty much with our average well permitting permitting in that. A few more water wells than we usually expect. Our Grand Stor Counties amount that we have spent is down quite a bit because of the pandemic. That we will spend a little more. We've had about four plugging and a little spike in testing recently. So that, that number will look a little better in a short while here. And then as far as managing the Grand Stor Counties, we are having a meeting, a Board of Health meeting later today. And we will discuss who will be the manager of the Grand Stor Counties contract. Got one more month on it before we go on to the next years. So for the 28E agreement, I just wanted to explain, so earlier, well, back in May, you signed the 28E agreement. And what had happened is that it expired back in 2008, the 28E agreement. DNR and, or supervisors. And then they were starting to, DNR was kind of pushing us around a little bit on one well permitting project, the Nevada Schools. And so I reminded them that there was no current contract. And, um, and I made a decision at that time that we will turn over the permitting process until we get a signed contract. Because I just didn't want to see blame being put on us for something that they didn't like without a contract in place. So, um, so thank you for signing that. And it has been turned over to DNR for their signing. And then I provided them all the information that they need as per the contract. And then the only thing left is to update the director position. That's all we'll need to do with that. Septics, we're now to the next slide. We, um, let's see, so for 2020, 80, so we're still in 21, we're doing fewer, fewer. It was pretty good in the beginning of the year, but I think because of the cost and the availability of materials, it's gone down some. The rate of applications coming in. While I, while, between the gap between me being gone and the new director, we are having professional evaluators do the septic designs in there. So for the most part, there's two engineers that are covering the county that do quite well. It does cost the homeowner several hundred dollars more to have the engineer come in and do that. And then the county will still go out. Hopefully Matt will, will have time to go out and just review the permits, make sure the setbacks and all that are well. But the soils will actually be done by the engineer. So just an update on the pumping ordinance, all those bills that like for the state legislature. Yeah, so I'm very, I'm here to just report that. I'm, I'm, so it's a good thing. And pumping is up incredibly. We talked to the pumpers in the area, and they're just busy as they come. And then to date, I've had 11 applications now that they just say, well, we realize that it's time to change those systems now. And they're not related to time of transfer or new building. So, um, you know, just, well, I think they're embarrassed to have a pumper come in and see it's just going over the hillside or whatever, you know. So indirectly, it's, it's really improving that program. Really happy to report that. Let's see. Yeah, Matt started off the outdoor pool season by calling City Veins and telling them that they needed to put barriers along the, that little lazy river thing. Apparently they had to pump the whole thing or stop the water and pump it all out because there's a pretty bad leak in that system. The, the pools and lazy river are isolated, so they know that that is where the leak is. So they'll get that fixed, but they didn't want anyone jumping in with no water in there. So barricades grew out, and Ames is working on getting that fixed. Pools are so much work, it's just crazy. And Linda, you're aware of this, I reviewed the proposals and interviewed consultants for the Skunk River Watershed Ed Waters contract. So that went well, that was a really interesting and fun process. As far as miscellaneous goes, next slide. We hired Taylor Jorgensen as the Environmental Health Specialist. She graduated in November of last year from ISU and really happy with her so far. So we looked down, had a send-off retirement party for Kathy Basilinski, and removed, renewed the pumper contract, and we agreed to still do Marshall County. They've got two, it's a moneymaker that we just can't turn down. And then probably the next contract that the state will give it to, to Marshall Town, Marshall County maybe. Let's see. And then on to the next one, I have some ongoing projects. I did go over and meet with the Boone County Sanitarium about that project. And I think, um, you know, it's kind of in a bowl. And so where the septic systems are discharging to, there were several that were damaged when the tiles were replaced in there. And so I'm confident that the county sanitarium over in Boone is addressing that, taking care of it. It's a slow process getting people to replace the whole septic systems. You know, it's a financial burden, and I think it's also in courts. There'll probably be some civil action going on, so that, that'll take a while. I don't think it's, it's a huge threat. It's no worse than our other ones discharging to creeks within the county itself, so. And then, um, so I need to pass on information, so Ames East Lincoln Way Annexation, they're gonna run a sewer line down there, so anyone who doesn't have a system on file should really be, should be hooking up. And I sent the letters telling them. So the project got delayed, so, um, so I'm not sure where we stand with the timeline on that right now. Demolition permits. We were, I was going forward with taking, having environmental health take over the demolition permits as opposed to planning and development because it is more environmental hazards that we address, and so it belongs in that department instead. And they are absolutely fine with that. They review them as they come in, as well as the assessor. Right now, it's still in, um, in Eaton's hands for, to decide whether or not we have to go through ordinance to do this. So I'm, I dropped it for now, and then the next person will have to come take it up again. And I'll let Amelia and Elsa that she knows to shepherd it through. Story City also has annexation to the north there that includes a nice sewer line, and we could probably pick up three or four that are discharged into tile drains. And that, again, should be mandatory if they're within 200 feet of the building. We are working on pumping ordinance implementation. Matt Corey made it such that the pumpers can go on their phone or computer, pull up the diagrams, and then also report the address and the condition of the tank and the volume of septic so that it goes right into our database. And that way we can kind of keep track of who's, who's complying with that five-year pumping.
So the, uh, the homeowner will not have to do that?
Correct. And we've, and some are nervous about that, and so they call and make sure that they get it on file and do that. And then in that little mail-out that went in, the assessor's mail-out, the little printer, it asked them to hold on to that receipt just in case, you know, until we get up and running and get all the glitches out. Send in something in, in the assessor's packet. People read those, and they really take them to heart. And I'll show up on the site now, and they'll say, did you know we have to pump our tanks now? And it's just like, yes, I know. So that was just really a win-win. Let's see. Yeah, so the next person is gonna have to take over binding agreements that are, um, that are overdue for putting in septic systems from previous time of transfer. We really went loose on these with the pandemic because people just weren't getting things done, and rightly so. Hickory Grove Lake Watershed Treatment upgrades. Mike promised me on Friday that, yeah, he's gonna make sure it gets done, and I hope he does.
What'd you call him, Mary?
Okay. Oh, yeah, and then my favorite one, the case filed on the trucking firm located on Ada-Hayden. So they claim they have a lateral, but it's, it's, there's concrete over, there's trucks over. So anyway, so now we approached it with a planning and development route because they're not in compliance that way. And I won't speak for them, but there's problems with that type of business right there. They are in the county, but just right on the, within the city almost, you know. So, um, that's another one I'm gonna be keeping an eye on because, you know, right there on Ada-Hayden, it's, you know, it needs to be changed out. Very important. And then, of course, we did the tanning ordinance today. And then the Board of Health meeting will discuss who's going to take care of the next two hearings. And maybe you would want to do that, Lisa, I'm not sure. And I, and that's all I have for today's report. Do you have any questions?
The well water permits, are these new construction or are these people replacing wells?
Um, a little bit of both. It's most, so most of our water wells, um, they're for confinement, it's usually in the past. But we've had a few recently, you know, because they, it's too expensive to, to raise livestock on rural water here. So well water, unless you really absolutely have the worst water, and then you pay the cost. So, and then geothermal wells, we permit also. So what was your question again?
Well, I just, I just wondered if it was residential, because there is rural water, and I don't know why anybody couldn't handle well.
Yeah. There's a, there are a few. And then close to Ames because of Xenia Water Service Area versus Ames, there's, sometimes they can't wait that long for those two entities to get figured out, and they have to drill a well. But for the most part, people hook up to rural water for their domestic supply.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Glad, really glad to hear from you that people have been discovering they need to replace their septic tanks.
I know it, yeah.
Because I, when we passed that ordinance, I had people calling and said, you know that septic systems are always just fine, Linda. You know, they take care of themselves. And I said, no, I honestly don't know that. And that, you know, I think, I think that the fact that we are discovering problems and we're not requiring that people do the big cost, but they know they need to. So by requiring them to pump out every five years, they know, like you said, one, the wall, the septic tank was crumbling in or falling in. Wouldn't have known it until it had been a really, really bad problem.
Yeah.
For the homeowner.
For the homeowner.
For, yeah. So, so I'm, I'm glad to hear that the legislature did not limit our ability to do something that makes a lot of sense.
So Anna posted in an article in the two state associations so that hopefully other counties will follow suit. So the IOWAA, which is a septic system state association, and then Iowa Environmental Health, I'm gonna post it there also. Get the word out a little bit.
Good. Thank you for checking in on the Boone County
Yeah.
septic concern too. I appreciate you going out and doing that. I know you went out on a weekend too, so thank you.
And we'll just have to monitor the legislation while it didn't, nothing happened this year. It's, it's, becomes alive again next year. You heard back to committee, so it's
And it's, it was very difficult to follow it, you know, our county is so much more transparent than the state, I think. And maybe I'm just, don't know how to examine it as well as, as the county here. But very disappointing to see how that all went down. And, um,
I mean, it is confusing because if they make any changes in the committee, it changes the bill number. You know, the bill numbers will change, so that's where you're, yeah, really trying to follow along and then figure out what the House or the Senate does. And, you know, somebody else drafts a different bill, you know, so.
You should have a class and teach people. You're about the third person who's asked you to do that, or the fourth person. So we'll probably do something like that come, come to fall.
Yeah, learn and learn, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was wondering why the Lees River didn't have water in it.
Oh, oh, thank you. I didn't know that either. Matt reported that this morning. It's like, oh, gosh, here we go again. He was the one that discovered the slide posts that were deteriorating, in a very dangerous state when he saw them, yeah. So we took over the program from Harden County Institute to New York County, so, yeah, he's, he's an eagle eye for that stuff.
All right, good job.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I feel like this is.
Round the ball.
Oh. Other reports, upcoming agenda items. Okay, I don't need that. Next we'll move on to public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. Open public forum number two. If you'd like to make comments, please raise your hand or hit star nine to mute yourself and speak. Seeing anything, Bar? Not seeing anything? Okay, well, well, it's public forum number two, liaison assignments, committee meeting, updates, announcements. Supervisor Basely, wanna start?
Yeah, sure. So this afternoon, we've got the ribbon cutting up on 560th and Huxley, and then I've got some meetings with the Alternatives Coordinator and our leadership meetings. Kind of a quiet week for me, I think.
Ribbon cutting. I'm also, do we have CCMT meeting tomorrow?
We do.
We do, okay, at 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
And I've got a couple of meetings with emergency management. One is a, we're looking at little bylaws, review committee, we're looking at some possible changes to bylaws, and also doing some follow-up on the microgrid issue to see what potential in using the microgrid might have for emergency management. Jurisdictional executives, we have the meeting Thursday evening. Saturday, I'll be at the Nevada Kennedy Garden dedication, and I think that probably takes care of the meat. Oh, we have, yeah, to give helps.
Yeah.
To give helps.
Yes, Friday.
Yeah.
Great.
So that's adhering to your structure.
Yeah, so I have basically the same as each of you. I do have the Board of Health meeting this afternoon. So ribbon cutting tonight, I have just 560th. Is there like a?
I sent out about four emails to anybody, and I think the GAF is also saying, we're on 560th. So hopefully somebody will find out.
Somebody will know what for.
Share it with the other people.
Okay. All right, wanted, wanted to make sure I didn't miss an email there. I've got the same meetings, the rest of the meetings as you both. On Monday, I also have Monday evening, the Public Health Leadership, the year two, meeting at 6:00 PM that, that evening. Otherwise, that's my, my entire week. And if there is nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
We will adjourn.
Second. Then we can second it. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Seddon's aye. We are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.